Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 11th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. First item on our agenda is determination of a quorum, and we have that. The next item is approving the minutes of December 7th, '22, and December 14th, '22 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
Do we need two motions or just one?
One.
One motion? Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes approved. The next items or item on our agenda are the public hearing hearings or recommendations to City Council. The first item on the agenda is a zoning application for approximately 4.1 acres located east of Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to PCD. B in Patel is the applicant, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for the Planning Commission to consider an application that's been made for property that's approximately 4.1 acres located along the eastern side of Memorial Boulevard, just north of Brentmead Drive, to be rezoned from its current RS-15, and that stands for Single Family Residential District, to PCD Planned Commercial District. The planned commercial district zoning in Murfreesboro does require a specific plan for those properties, and so you have in your agenda packet a program book for a project called Memorial Plaza, which outlines the proposed rezoning standards that would apply to this property. This property is, as I mentioned, located north of Brentmead Drive. On the south and eastern sides of the property is the existing Brentmead subdivision, which is zoned RS-15. To the north is property zone Commercial Local, and you can see that some of those are developed as zero lot line residential uses with commercial uses on the corner. Across Memorial Boulevard are commercial out parcels. So on two sides, it's Brentmead and then some commercial and zero lot lines surrounding it. This lot is actually a part of the Brentmead subdivision. According to the plat I found, it's Lot 32 of Section 1 of that subdivision. There was a house on the property, but it's been demolished. I believe it was demolished last year. The application, as I mentioned, to PCD does have a program book for Memorial Plaza. That program book does call for it to be developed, let me get to the page here, in four phases with four buildings. One, two, three, four. In that order is the anticipated development of the property. So Buildings 1 and 2 are located closest to Memorial Boulevard, and they're more traditional strip centers or commercial centers that you might see. Building 3 allows many of the uses in those commercial strip centers, but a little bit more restricted. And Building 4 is furthest from Memorial Boulevard and probably closest to some single-family homes, and it has the most restrictive set of uses. If you've looked through your program book, you would have looked on Page 8. Page 8 provides the list of the uses that were permitted in those Buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4. And it's basically, these are the uses for 1 and 2. This is for 3, and this is for 4. And so you can see that the buildings closest to Memorial have more uses and a more variety of commercial uses allowed, whereas it gets more restrictive as you go to the back. The applicants have stated that they intend Building D, or the fourth building in the back, to likely be something like a daycare center, but this program book does give a list of options, not just a daycare center, but the other uses would be allowed as well. Some of the advice staff gave the applicants is similar to what was incorporated in the program book for property near Sulfur Springs Road at Northfield Boulevard, talking about the state of the property when it's not developed, since it is proposed to be developed in phases, and some of the property may sit for some time. It could be months, it could be years. Wanted the condition of the property to be addressed. And so you can see on the same page with the permitted uses, there's a paragraph at the bottom that talks about the conditions of the property that's not yet developed, basically clean and green. You can't use it for temporary sales of food or merchandise. And so that language is borrowed essentially from the other developments that we've seen on Northfield. There are also some additional language about the development of the project, and of course, there's a phasing plan here. The architecture is mostly schematic at this point, but they are showing an indication to have a brick and stone building. And then with the buildings long front, they did a pitched roof because believing that that meshed more with existing single-family than a more modern flat roof would. And so you see that in some of the buildings that they've presented to you. And then the city does have a future land use map. We have the existing future land use map that was adopted with the 2035 Plan several years ago, and the proposed future land use map. Both do recommend that if a zoning change does happen on this property, that it be for a general commercial use. And so the characteristics of a general commercial use are that they have significant portions of development dedicated to vehicular access or drives, includes formal open space, has pedestrian connections, joint shared parking, and shared plazas, and this development is incorporating those elements. As far as transportation, the site does have direct access to Memorial Boulevard, which is a state highway, and to a street stub to Brentmead Drive, which goes out to Signalize intersection. And so that those existing rights of ways exist and do currently connect to the property. The project does propose two types of buffer, one type of buffer along the RS-15 property and another one along the CL property. And so staff asked the applicants to come up with a plan on buffering, because I mentioned that since this is a phased development, it's rather large, and we don't know how long it will be for it to build out in its entirety, wanted them to address the buffer. And so staff asked for the site to grade the buffer area and plant it with the first phase so that you can benefit from years of growth of the plants and not wait until later, particularly because the last phase is what's in the back. And so that's a high point that goes down into Memorial Boulevard, so we wanted them to consider doing the buffer in the first phase, which we have done sometimes. The applicant came back and said that they'd like to go ahead and grade the buffer, but only construct half the width of the buffer. So in some, it's 15 feet, in some, it's 12. So do half the width now, and then when that phase is developed, do the other half. And so that's what they have in the program book. We, I think, mentioned that at the workshop when it was initially brought up. The applicant has hired SEC to represent them, and they've prepared the program book. Mr. Matt Taylor is here this evening, and he's got a presentation on the proposed planned commercial district zoning for this property. But before he comes up, do you have any questions from me or any other members of our staff?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Halliburton, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by the architect for the project, Mr. Tom Meek, and will be giving you a brief presentation over what we've called Memorial Plaza, as Ms. Green already indicated. The site is about a four-acre site to the north of Brentmead Drive and to the east of Memorial Boulevard, shown here in the pink and white linework. As Ms. Green said, it is zoned RS-15 today, is joined on the east and south by RS-15, and then to the north by Commercial Local, and then across Memorial Boulevard, we have Commercial Highway for those existing commercial uses. The property today generally flows from east to west toward Memorial Boulevard. Our sanitary sewer is located along 231. We'll pick it up there and extend it into the site. And then water is located along 231, as well as the stub coming from Brentmead Drive. The top-left picture here is the existing site. You can see the rise as you go back. This would basically be standing on 231, looking into the property. You can see the old driveway that went up to the house that was previously removed due to discondition. The upper right-hand corner is kind of a representation of the homes inside of Brentmead. And then lower picture there is a representation of the commercial uses across Memorial Boulevard. Our plan, like I said, is just over four acres in size. We've got four buildings. They're all single-story buildings. That's the maximum they can be. And our total square footage is just over 32,000 square feet for those four buildings combined. We do have one access point on the Memorial Boulevard. It aligns with the access point across the street. That's between the tire shop and subway center there. Then we also have a connection into the stub coming from Brentmead Drive. Worked very closely with staff on that connection. Both us and them felt like that was important to give access back to the signal that was installed a few years ago at Brentmead and Memorial Boulevard. We're providing a lot of buffering on the south, east, and north, as Ms. Green indicated. We've also got an abundance of landscaping around our buildings and screening all of our trash, mechanical equipments. And then we've located our formal open space to the central portion of the development between A and C. So it'll be much more highly utilized there, we believe, due to that location. Building A in the northwest or the top-left of this picture here, we intend to be the first building constructed. It does have a drive-through on the northern side. We've located it there so that that use is away from the existing residential users. All of our stormwater will be underground for this site, so either in pipe or some sort of pervious pavement-type system. We will design that with a site plan. This site will fully comply with all the lighting standards the city has and no light intrusion on the neighbors. And then we will screen all of our parking from view from the right-of-way. I think one important aspect of this layout is we've tried not to let parking dominate the streetscape along Memorial Boulevard and tuck it in behind, distribute that parking throughout. So I think it makes for a nicer development there. We spent a lot of time on architecture with staff. One thing that was always part of the plan was a cohesive architecture to develop this campus feel. So I think you'll see that in the architectural elevations that we have. We've also worked very closely to make sure we comply with design guidelines, so things like defined entryways, base of building, multiple building planes, and building accent lighting, so that these buildings are attractive at night, just like they are in the daytime. And then we've set a maximum building height of 35 feet, which matches the maximum building height for the RS-15. We didn't want to be any higher than that. Matter of fact, I don't think any of our buildings actually approached that 35 feet at this point. And in our materials, you'll see they're consistent throughout. It's brick and stone predominantly. And then we've tried to incorporate some sloped roofs, some shingles, but we also make sense of metal roofs in there as well. I think that you'll see consistent lines and shapes and forms. This would be Building A, which is the northwest corner building. This is the first building, we think, will be constructed. You can see we've defined our entryways with glass awnings. Tried to break up that roof line on each end, and they got multiple building planes through there. One thing, I mentioned the parking being distributed throughout the site. With that being the case, the back of these buildings, A and B, are extremely important. So we worked with staff to try to mimic the architecture that's on the front to the back. The only difference is, instead of just straight glass, we're using solid doors back there because that is a service area. But we did try to have complementary architecture, since so many people will see that. Building B is very, very similar to Building A, but we've tried to change up, you know, some of the columns, some of the roof lines, so that they are standalone, but cohesive at the same time. And then Building C, which is kind of the middle building, if you will, again, it's of similar nature, but it does have its own feel. And then the very rear building where we think is really a daycare site. So we've tried to design the building and the site layout with the daycare in mind. And so very defined, pronounced entryway there, but still some of the same forms with roof lines, definitely the same materials throughout. Landscape design, as Ms. Green said, that was very important. We knew we were surrounded by residential. And so we've got a Type D on our south and east, where we abut the residential detached. Type D is our second-most strenuous buffer in our zoning ordinance. We've also planned for a 10-foot fence inside of that buffer. That fence will be installed entirely with Phase 1, and then anything between the fence and our neighbors will be, all that plant material will be installed with Phase 1. And so we just ask that we don't plant on the other side, so in case we're grading or something, we don't disturb that. But we entirely want that growth to occur while we're building out the development. So we're in complete agreement with that.
Matt, it'll go landscaping, it'll go house landscaping fence.
Yes, and then more landscaping in the future, whenever we do that.
In the future, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And then we've got a Type C buffer located along the north side, and of course, your standard foundation plannings, a well landscape sign, and then screening of our parking and trash areas. So the yellow is where that 10-foot fence and Type D buffer will be, and then the blue is the Type C buffer. To the west or left of the blue, that is commercial uses, so we did not continue the buffer there. These are just some samples of the type materials, plant materials we use on site. The lower right-hand corner, we'll use a lot of that inside that buffer. That's an evergreen material, be green all year long. It will grow pretty quickly and fill out. But in the meantime, that's why we have the fence, so that we have that permanent barrier from day one. The upper two pictures are shade trees. You'll see a lot of that around the perimeter, as well as in the parking lot. And in the lower left-hand corner, we'll use that for some accents underneath power lines along Memorial Boulevard, and then inside of our formal area for color and interest. Uses were a big part of this program and this book. Obviously, Building A and B, shown in blue here, they were closer to Memorial Boulevard, and so those uses were a little more liberal, I'll say, but they've still been pared way down from even our commercial fringe list in our zoning ordinance. And so we have specifically excluded things like payday loan, cash advance uses, vapor smoke shops. And so none of those can be inside of here. These are still very neighborhood services. There's a lot of restaurants, you know, vet office, things like that that are in here. We're not drawing somebody from Blackman to come to this center. This is very much serving north Murfreesboro, provide those services that we've talked about the north part of town have needed. I know we've been talking about the last decade, it feels like. Building C, as you move into the site, this list was pared back from A and B. We probably cut out about 20 uses. Again, these are more destination-oriented services and users, people that don't necessarily need the frontage on Memorial Boulevard, so more office-type uses. And then finally, Building D is the most restrictive. It is very similar to Building C. I think we just cut out a couple of the restaurant users. Again, we think this is a good daycare facility location, just when we look in the general area. Then access, we have our primary access on the Memorial Boulevard. Again, it aligns with an access point on the other side of Memorial Boulevard. And then we have our secondary access toward Brentmead Drive, so we do have access back to that signal. And then we tried to promote a very good pedestrian system, shown here in the blue. So we've got dual connections out to Memorial and connections to all of our buildings between each other to promote that walkability. And then we have committed to no construction traffic onto Brentmead Drive. We're going to physically block that off during construction, and we will open that up once we get ready for that first CFO. Staff and we likewise wanted that connection, that access back to the signal with our first building. And then we did host a neighborhood meeting. I think it's been a couple of months ago at this point. I think that we had, I think, around 15 to 20 people. Don't remember the exact number. I felt like the majority of that conversation was centered around the connection to that Brentmead Drive. That's important to us, as well as staff, so we have not changed that. There was quite a bit of conversation about uses, so we did cut out some uses. I think we, I know we eliminated liquor store. I don't remember the others, but I know we did eliminate that from the use chart as a request from that meeting. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Any questions for Matt for now?
Thank you.
At this point, we'll be going into our public hearing on this application. If you have not attended Murfreesboro Planning Commission public hearing before, what we like to do is, of course, everyone has an opportunity to speak either for or against the application. We like for each person here to have three minutes so that they have an opportunity to share what they would like about or not like about the application in and of itself. And we try to limit that time so that everybody has an opportunity to speak, that so chooses. If you are here speaking on behalf of an entire association, I don't know if Brentmead has an HOA or not, we would give that individual five minutes to speak on behalf of the entire association. With respects to any questions that you might have and you bring up as part when you do speak, those questions will be answered at the end of the public hearing. And so if you do ask, what about the water or whatever, those questions will be answered at, once the public hearing has been closed. If you will address your questions directly to the Planning Commission versus the applicant, we would appreciate that. And again, we will address those questions at the end of the public hearing. That being said, we will open the public hearing, and anyone that would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward.
Hello. I live on Brentmead, 129, the first cul-de-sac after the proposed building. And one of our concerns is the rate of speed of cars already driving on Brentmead, and especially in the morning, people trying to get across.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you mind stating your name for the record?
I'm so sorry. Catherine Fowler.
Thank you.
F-O-W-L-E-R. We're already seeing people racing down our street, and I mean racing, to get to the school. Seagull, I guess, is at the back of Aldi there. And so we expect that we're going to see even more traffic, and our concern is that the speed limit of 30 is not being observed already. So we're concerned about danger there. And we also are concerned about the need for access onto Brentmead, which is going to back up our traffic even more. I live at the first cul-de-sac, and I cannot make it to that traffic light now and make it to a green traffic light before it turns, so that light changes very quickly. So a daycare and a whole lot more traffic is just going to jam up our neighborhood. We don't want our street to become a throughway. So our question is, it's not a question, our request would be some sort of speed humps to slow down the cars.
Thank you. And if you know, I failed to mention this. Matthew, you brought it up. If you will state your name and address before you speak. I apologize. Anyone else?
My name is Harold Richardson. I live at 133 Brentmead. I've lived on the street about 12 years. Moved here when it was very quiet. Understand the growth of Murfreesboro, but I'm against access to Brentmead. I just don't understand how you can allow businesses to cut through two houses, even though it's called a right-of-way, and then turn left on Brentmead and race down to Madison and make another left, go down to Compton or whatever. I think it's dangerous enough as it is, and I wish and I hope that y'all vote against that, just for safety reasons. There's plenty of businesses up and down Memorial that do not have a traffic light. You can't put a traffic light in front of everybody. And some people just, you go down to Publix from where I go, you stage it, you turn left and you turn right into Publix. You turn right out of Publix, you don't make a left at 4:00 in the afternoon. And I think that people should be ready to do that and not make an access into a neighborhood for a business. And I really request y'all think that over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
My name is Cara Ivy. I live at 3307 Yorkshire, which is the street where the fence would back up to. I would seriously say, take a long consideration about this. We do worry a lot about traffic. Currently, I am right at the fence line. So one of my questions is, what type of fence is this going to be? Is this going to be a standard run-of-the-mill 10-foot fence? I already have a fence along the back of my property, so I'm wondering what kind of fence that is going to be exactly, whether that be wood, you know, wood's going to rot over time. I've already removed a couple of the trees off the property. There were already, like, trees that he was proposing, the spruce, I guess. Yes, they do grow fast, but they can grow also very big. I don't want that hanging over my property, because I've already cut down two so far. The speeding is my main concern, how far it's going to get backed up. If we have a daycare at the back, which I know that that's Phase 4, and it could take 10 years to build it, I'm very well aware of that. But once something like that goes in, all of the parking is in the middle of the parking lot, as it shows on there. They are going to be coming out one way, and that's going to be on Brentmead. If I've got to take a right off of Yorkshire to get onto Brentmead to even get to the light, and I'm racing 30 or 40 people dropping off their kids in the morning, I can't get across to Seagull to drop off my child, because that light takes forever right now. That is not a good access point coming off of that side road at all. And I do think it's going to cause a lot of problems all the way, just like he said, all the way down Brentmead. And then they're going to be hanging a left onto Madison to get out of Compton. You know, it's one or the other, the traffic. And he did explain to us that they could not put another traffic light because of the distance that it, you know, from the front. I don't think many people will be utilizing their front entrance. They're going to be using the entrance, coming in at the light off Brentmead, and then taking a left between two houses. That's what doesn't make sense to me, is the fact that that tiny road is going to be between two houses. I wouldn't want to live in those houses if it was me. So I'm asking you guys to seriously reconsider this. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy.
My name is Wendell Burnett. I'm at 326 Brewster Court, which is just off of Brentmead. I've been there about a decade. Like the other gentleman here, it was a very quiet and nice neighborhood when I moved in. And as far as the traffic is already getting out of hand, they were talking about speeders. I had one blow by me this morning while I'm headed down to the traffic light. It's ridiculous. Since they just put in the apartments that are not even full yet, we've got so much more cut-through traffic. And giving any more access to an outside entity is just going to make it almost impossible to maintain our stand. is just going to make it almost impossible to maintain our standard of life and safety for the children and things that live in that neighborhood. You know, I have grandkids and things that come over, and I would like them to be safe when they come to my house. And the traffic is not going to allow that to happen, as it stands, the way they have it designed now. And I hope y'all consider this and deny these requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this application?
Robert Fowler, 129 Brent Mead. The other half of Katherine. Just want to ask a couple of questions that she didn't ask. One is, who owns that right-of-way? That is not a street. It's not a named street, the stub that goes to Brent Mead from the property. It's basically a driveway. It's not a road. And will improvements be made to that? It would probably have to be widened. And would the property owners on either side of that be compensated for that? Because I imagine that some of their property would have to be taken. Just to reiterate, I'm opposed, not to the development, but to the stub being used to Brent Mead. I think that that would cause a great problem. And that's the only thing that most of us, I think, have a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this application?
My name is Carol Holt House. I'm a property owner of 118B Fairfax. And I have more of a question. When the slide was shown, when the slide was shown with the perimeter, it appeared that there would be fencing around only a partial area. Our property is on the northeast side. And I wanted to know if that was just going to be a berm, or is there going to be an actual fence? There is a fence now, but it is my understanding that that fence will be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. So, I'll go through, well, does anybody have any questions that they want to bring up before I go through some of the items that, that I heard as part of the public hearing? Okay. So, Ms. Green or Matthew, whoever, the first speaker talked about, you know, speeding down Brent Mead and the idea of speed bumps. Is that a possibility? I know that it's been tested in other areas in the city, but I'll let you address that.
Sure. Our city engineer has piloted a program where the city installed speed bumps in some areas. The speed bumps are designed to allow emergency responder vehicles to go through at high speed, but regular vehicles can't. And the pilot part, I think, is over. So, if, if somebody in a neighborhood is interested in that, they reach out to Michelle Emerson, our city engineer. There is a study with information that speaks to what the warrants are to require that. So, they're not just put up because they're requests, but there needs to be a certain number of residents who request it, and the traffic has to meet certain standards. And that's all, I believe, available on our website. But Ms. Emerson is the contact for that program, and so, that's in our public infrastructure department. And she, she talks to people about this every week. I know some communities, some streets do qualify and some don't. Alexander was one of the first ones, but we've got them in, in more of our community now, because some other areas have qualified for those, those speed bumps that the city's installed.
She also mentioned, which I thought was a good question, light change, this, you know, how often it changes, how fast it changes, so that it'll allow more cars to get out of Brent Mead. Is that, is that, who, who studies that? Who comes up with that?
Sure. We call that signal timing. And we have a transportation and traffic department that's solely dedicated to managing the movement of, of traffic in the city of Murfreesboro. The contact that I usually speak to is Ram Balachandra, who is a very technical person and knows all the information. Something that's really important to note is Memorial Boulevard is a state highway. Tennessee Department of Transportation technically owns that road, although we manage it. In order to put, put in signals or affect the timing, they have to meet the policies and procedures that TDOT mandates for Memorial Boulevard. And so, it may be that, and I personally have gone to Ram and, and asked for adjustments on signal timings. And if it can't be done, he explains why it can't be done. But if it, but otherwise, they'll send people out, and they'll study it, and they'll clock the number of vehicles and see if they can make adjustments from the lab that we have here in City Hall. It's a neat process. I think it's one of the things that our elementary and middle school students always visit the lab and see how that works. And it's, it's a very creative space, and it's something that can be addressed even outside this process. If somebody has questions about signal timing, they don't need to wait for a public hearing, but can call the transportation department and talk to them about that. I know that, I'm not an engineer, and, but one of the things that they're going to be looking at is Memorial Boulevard does carry a large volume of traffic. It carries more vehicles than Brent Mead Drive does. And so, they'll look at how changing timing on Brent Mead or Kings Ridge would affect Memorial Boulevard when they study the signal timing. Sometimes it's timing. Sometimes it's adding turn lanes. I know our engineering department have done hotspot programs in the past. If you went on Robert Rose Drive, where it comes out to Thompson Lane, you can see that just adding that right turn lane really helped. It wasn't so much the signal timing, but adding that, getting the turning traffic out of the way helped reduce the, the car stacking there. And when we talk about the connection to Brent Mead Drive, actually, there is dedicated public right-of-way that goes to this property. So, this property currently has access to right-of-way. It's not named, but it's owned by the city of Murfreesboro. It was developed in the city of Murfreesboro. It was dedicated to the city of Murfreesboro by the developer of Brent Mead. It does stop short of the property, so with development of this parcel, they would need to connect to the existing right-of-way. But I don't think that there are any changes proposed to that paved area between, or that connects to Brent Mead Drive. It is paved by the city of Murfreesboro. Our engineering department paves that, probably not very frequently. Right now, you can even see in the orthophoto, it looks like somebody's parking in that. Technically, they're parking in public right-of-way, and it's not private property or a driveway, but a public right-of-way. When we looked at the width of that right-of-way, we didn't see that there was any need to purchase additional right-of-way. The right-of-way is actually wider than the street, so the street is narrower than the property owned by the city of Murfreesboro, which is very common in all municipalities in the state of Tennessee.
So, we don't, what we're saying is, we don't anticipate that the stub street would be, even though we've got more right-of-way to be able to do it, we don't suspect that we're going to widen that street? Is that a correct statement?
It's correct. And I zoomed in on the map. I don't know if Cable Department can pull that up. But you can see the black lines that are on the map show approximate property lines. There's a basketball goal, which is not uncommon in these stub streets. We do have subdivision specifications, street specifications. I talked about if a street that ends into property, it must be extended. I think there could be scenarios where that doesn't happen, but staff will always advocate to support our adopted development standards, because it provides a playbook for all development in Murfreesboro. And so, it has always been anticipated that this extends into a public right-of-way. Now, what's different is this is extending into private property. But that is public right-of-way. We don't see any need to, for the city to purchase any additional right-of-way. As a matter of fact, we wouldn't do it for private development. And it would, and so, that, that currently exists today.
So, the next questions that I have, Mr. Taylor, you might want to address, or that I heard. The first one, well, let me ask it in reverse order. Will there be a, I know that there's a, where it's not RS-15, you mentioned was a different buffer. Are we saying that there's no fence there either?
We've not proposed a fence along, I don't know if y'all can see that, but that portion, we do not have a fence. If the cable could, yeah. So, that blew through there. We have not proposed a fence.
That's type C buffer, right, Matt?
Yes.
But are you proposing a fence where the drive-through is going to be adjacent?
No, because all, all that, that's a, I'm pretty sure that's a dental, dental office or eye doctor. I cannot remember which one. It's a lady. I just can't remember which one she practices.
Can you draw the fence again, Matt, please? Okay.
It wouldn't be across the road, but. Touche.
We actually proposed that one time. All right. The second question is, what type of fence is it? I don't remember that being part of the presentation.
You're right. It was not. It's a ten-foot tall, it'll be a PVC fence. I think we do have a typo in the book that says it could be wood nor PVC, but we did make that commitment at the neighborhood meeting. It would be entirely PVC, so we did not have the maintenance concerns that the, I think it was Ms. Ivy mentioned. So, it'll be entirely PVC.
All right. And then, with respects to the question about the type D buffer in the plannings, my question, my, I would assume that we would be far enough away from the other party's property line that our trees or our plants would not be encroaching on their property lines?
Correct. All of the, definitely all the stems would be over on us. Now, you know, in thirty years, if that tree has branched out, you know, maybe there could be something there. The evergreens especially, my landscape architect texted me while, I guess he's watching this at home. He said that they would be tighter limbs, so should not have that same issue that Ms. Ivy, I think it was Ms. Ivy, mentioned earlier.
All right. Those are the questions that I heard. Did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Taylor or for staff?
I do. On the Fairfax side, they said that there was a fence, existing fence there that would possibly be torn down.
So, I believe that is their fence. I don't think that there's a fence from, that was ours on there. And so, if it's not on our property, we're not going to tear it down. Even if it's on the property line, we wouldn't tear it down. We would consider that a shared element, unless we went to them and we, you know, maybe we want to do some maintenance if, if it is in disrepair. So, I, I don't recall there being a fence on our side through there.
Was that all you had, Warren?
Yeah.
Was there a reason you didn't propose a fence around, surrounding all the residential properties? All the RS-15 and the, I know that says commercial local, but it appears if people live there.
You know, there's probably a cost factor in there, but you know, if that's something that is important to the commission, we would be happy to continue that down that line. That's not an issue.
Anyone else have thoughts on that?
I agree with you, Jamie. I'd like to see that, too. I think it would be a good buffer between those, those residents and this development. No, I agree.
Yeah. When I first saw it, I saw CL, and I didn't realize someone lived there until someone spoke with a Fairfax address. And so, I, I think, but you said this is a dental office in the northwest corner, right?
Yes, ma'am. Along those two.
I don't know. Would the fence need to go all the way to Memorial, like it does on the Brent Mead side? Or just stop at the, just stop and add some buffer?
Okay. That's not a problem. We'll take care of that.
My only other question was really more for staff. But thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Or Matthew, as Ken called you. I like that. You called him Matthew earlier. I was like, I like that.
Margaret Ann, can I ask you a question, my dear? If I remember correctly, because there are so many proposals, and I don't remember what we've actually approved, but I know last year we looked at permitted uses, and we were amending the permitted uses, and we were discussing whether or not boarding for animals was permitted with the vet offices. For this project in Building D, veterinarian offices are allowed. Is boarding permitted?
It's not, overnight boarding is not permitted.
Perfect. Okay.
There's veterinary hospital, veterinary clinic, and veterinarian office.
So, no overnight boarding? I mean, you still have the concern of a dog stays the night after?
It wouldn't, and it wouldn't be.
All right. Any other questions for staff or applicant?
Oh, actually, yes. Are we allowing a left turn out of the development onto Memorial?
Yeah. The, the driveway, it's a three-lane intersection, so it does. Here it is.
Okay.
It's a full access.
You know, you guys know I'm really passionate about not turning left onto main roads. Was that a staff request that there be a left turn there, or would we consider doing a no-left turn and having them go out to the stoplight?
I may have to ask Matt Taylor, because he works with TDOT more often, but it's a full access. And TDOT will oftentimes not allow a limited access when there's that continuous turn lane that's in the center, but.
I think Ms. Green's right. And I think that for certain portions of the day, you won't, it will not be a very well-functioning left turn.
But people will try.
Well, that's why we, that's why this connection to the South was so important to us and to staff, is give people that ability. We, I think they'll still use the right pretty freely all throughout the day. I think that left is probably okay eighty percent of the time throughout the day. I lived on the north side town for ten years. I think Mr. Blomley still lives up there. Lefts can be challenging in those peak times, for sure, but the rest of the time, they are pretty free-flow. So, I think that we would prefer to keep that option. And TDOT likes that on these larger roads, because they see more abuse, because you have more room to hook a Uie, if you will, on a big road, if it's a five-lane. A smaller road, they tend to be a little bit more effective if they're designed appropriately.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, while I got you up there, I'm going to ask this question. Was there given any consideration to maybe a queuing lane into the development? And the reason I ask this question is because it's Chick-fil-A on Memorial. It backs up so much, and it slows down traffic. And so, my concern is that people may be trying to get into this, people picking up their kid, and whatever may have you. And that, and that backs up on Memorial. So, I wanted to know if any kind of thought was given to having like a, a right?
Like, like here?
Yes.
So, we've not evaluated that. We would normally consider that at a site plan level, if, if we think that's warranted. I would say that, you know, we did, just being familiar with that north side town, I don't think there's a right turn lane within a mile of here. And not to say that that's always the standard, but it would be something we would look at the site plan level, for sure.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor or for staff?
Thank you.
Any comments or thoughts or vote on this application?
I guess I'll make a, just a comment on the connection. As a commission, we've always went down the path of when there's a connection, the opportunity there. We typically take that connection, because that is one of the things that the staff and the commission has said that we wanted to do in all circumstances. There's very few circumstances that we don't make those types of connections. I know from the standpoint of the neighbors that it looks like there may be more queuing or more traffic on the, on the road. But from a planning department standpoint, we like to make those connections, to offer those options for people to get out and flow the traffic. Just Mike.
No, the public hearing's closed.
Anything else?
Well, to add on to that, I feel like it would be important to say, it's also for emergency connections and emergency EMS services. So, you know, two points of ingress and egress are very important. And I think that's one of the reasons that we always continue to uphold that decision. So, I think I would feel remiss if I didn't add that to what you said there.
I appreciate that.
And, you know, having said that, I'm, I'm in favor of the project. I'll make a motion that we approve some of y'all's staff comments.
Second.
So, is there any comp, anything to do with the fence?
Well, as long as Matt Taylor promis, I'm just kidding. Do you promise, Matt?
So, we have a?
If it's a condition of your motion, I'll, if you amend it now that has a condition, then I'll make sure it's in the PCD book before it goes. then I'll make sure it's in the PCD book before it goes to city council.
Okay, perfect.
You talked about a fence and you talked about, um, buff, the, the fencing. Matthew, what else?
The, the ten-foot fence along the residences to the north, um, but stopping when it gets to the commercial. And were there any modifications to the landscaping to the north, or were you fine with the?
No, I think we just clarified.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, um, to approve subject to putting the fence, um, on the CL side all the way to the commercial, um, but leaving the landscape as is. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That application passes. So moving on to item B is an annex petition and plan of services for approximately point eight-one acres located along South Church Street and High, Highfield Drive. Sam Willard is the applicant. Uh, Ms. Rush is the presenter.
Good evening. So the proposed project before you now is an annexation and, uh, plan of services for property located along South Church Street, approximately point eight-one acres in size. It's located along the west side of South Church Street and south of Highfield Drive. Uh, surrounding properties to the north and west and south are located in the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County and our zoned, um, RM, which is a, a single-family residential detached. A lot of the properties in this area along South Church that are fronting out to South Church are a combination of houses and commercial. Some are just residential. I think there may be one that's just commercial. So there is kind of a transition happening along this segment of South Church Street. On the east side of South Church Street is a, uh, su-, um, shopping center under development. Currently, the Aldies is open. It's marketplace at Savannah Ridge, which is, uh, part of a planned unit development, uh, primarily a shopping center with some townhome units proposed for the far east side of that, of that property. Um, the subject property currently has a single-family residence on it. It would be removed as part of this, um, development. Simultaneous with the annexation is a request to zone the property to planned commercial district. The property is located within the city's urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous to the city limits along the east property line. Uh, as you all know, the, the, uh, city staff and planning is currently working on a proposed update to the future land use map in chapter four of our Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan. As part of the proposal, um, staff has been working on, we are recommending a service infill line. This property is located within the area that's inside the service infill line. Um, that's a part of the proposed future land use map. Uh, staff completed a plan of services and, uh, following that study, it was concluded that the city services can be provided to this property. Uh, staff held a neighborhood meeting on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two at the Barfield Wilderness Station. Um, it was attended by surrounding neighbors that did provide comments at that time. Staff is making a recommendation, and I'd like to read that into the record. Staff's recommending approval of the annexation based upon the following reasons. The study area is contiguous with the existing city limits and is within the Murfreesboro urban growth boundary. The study area is in the service infill area of the proposed update to the two thousand thirty-five comprehensive plan land use map. City services can be provided to the subject property upon annexation, and simultaneous with this application is a request to zone the property to planned commercial district. And city, city services can be provided to the subject property for future commercial development of the site. Uh, the action that staff is asking from the planning commission tonight is to conduct a public hearing and discuss the matter, and then make addition, determination or recommendation to the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant's representative is also here this evening, Matt Taylor from SEC. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Rush? Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to add to this portion? Okay. Before we open the public hearing, uh, on this matter, as you can see, there are two public hearings associated with this application. This first one is we're speaking of the annexation of this property into the city of Murfreesboro. If your comments or questions are associated with the planned use of the property versus just the annexation, then you may wanna, uh, hold your comments or questions until the second public hearing. However, you have the right to speak at each public hearing. So with that, anyone that would like to speak for or against the annexation of this property into the city of Murfreesboro, please come forward. All right, seeing no one, um, I'll close the public hearing and ask for any questions, comments, or vote from the commission.
If there aren't, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Ms. Rush, um, you've got the next one, the companion application, which is the zoning application for approximately point five-four acre, uh, piece of property located along South Church Street and Highfield Drive to be zoned PCD. Uh, South Church Street's corner, PCD, simultaneous with annexation. Salem Investment Partners is the applicant.
Thank you. Um, so you're right, correct. This, uh, this agenda item is the request to zone the property to planned commercial district. Simultaneous with the annexation, that was the prior agenda item. As noted before, the property is located along the west side of South Church Street. Um, it is approximately point five-four acres in size and is located also south of Highfield Drive. Um, neighborhood meeting was held on this, uh, program book and what was proposed for the commercial zoning on November twenty-eighth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, pardon me. Um, the PCD uses at that point were, um, presented to the neighborhood meeting. The neighbors had asked for some of the uses to specifically be prohibited, and so that was included in the program book. So it is a limited use of uses that are typically in the CF or commercial fringe zoning district. It is a subset of that. It does not include all the uses. And then again, it's specifically prohibited vape shop, uh, pain clinic, and drug and alcohol rehabilitation, uh, rehab clinics. Uh, the site design is, uh, as you can see on the map on the screen right now, is centrally located on the property. Parking is located on both the east and west sides of the property. The building faces out towards, um, South Church Street. It does have an entrance, um, two entrances on South Church Street, but it also has an entrance facing, um, the High, Highfield Drive side. Uh, the staff had asked the applicant to, um, include stubs, connections, future connections to the property to the south. The program book was revised to include that. Um, there was also some text that needed to be revised, uh, to staff satisfaction, and I've asked Mr. Blomley to pass out some revised pages, uh, that would be inserted and replaced um, for the pages in the program book that you received in your agenda. It would be pages seven and twelve. Uh, the text that got revised was specifically, um, requiring that the applicant will provide cross-connectivity to the south when the property to the south is redeveloped. The driveway stubs shall be constructed up to the southern property line with site plan for this development. Furthermore, an access easement will be recorded when the property to the south is redeveloped and both property owners enter into a mutually agreed-upon maintenance and cross-access agreement for any shared access points. So staff is recommend, is recommending, uh, that this program book do include that, that revised language. Some of the other, um, things that I have note on the site design is that there is a, a type D buffer along the west property line. The properties to the west are single-family residential. Um, the property to the south is a residence, but it's also used as a commercial business. And as you can see on the map, there is a parking lot and a, and a commercial sign in the front. Um, the person does live there, but they do operate a massage therapy business as well as a chiropractic office. Uh, the building design. See if I got that. I can't figure out how to scroll faster. I do apologize. All right. So it's, uh, it's a, you know, it's a fairly, um, run-of-the-milk, regular, commercial building, uh, flat rooftop with cornice. It is a multi-tenant building. Uh, the applicant has indicated that most likely the first tenant going in will probably be in urgent care and not sure what the other tenant would be. Um, so it is for two tenant spaces at this time. Um, it's primarily a brick with stone on the, the lower level. Um, it does have raised parapets, so rooftop equipment would be installed on the roof and located below the parapet wall. The applicant is asking for exceptions, uh, to our standard zoning, uh, similar zoning district for this planned commercial district. Um, and that is because of the property to the south being a residence. So it is zoned as residential. It's located in the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County. But again, it's also used as a combination, uh, commercial business legally. They have a conditional use permit for those businesses that are being operated. So the exceptions requested would be, um, whenever there's a property zoned commercial, um, being zoned commercial adjacent to something that's already zoned residential, we require a buffer D. And so the, uh, request is to not do a buffer D, but the, to do a five-foot wide planner, landscape planner. And the second request is a reduction, again, for that same property line of the setback. Um, we require ten-foot minimum setback separation between a residentially zoned property and a commercial development, and they're asking for a five-foot separation. If it was between two commercial businesses, it, it could be as low as zero. So, um, that is the request is for five feet. Uh, the future land use map is currently, um, suburban residential. Uh, we are, as I indicated, in the process of updating, um, our future land use map and the proposed changes does depict this as a suburban neighborhood commercial land use designation and not residential. So with the proposed rezoning, it would be consistent with the future land use map. So with that, staff, staff does have recommendations. I'll read those into the minutes. If I can find them. The planned commercial district zoning as proposed is compatible with the commercial development occurring along this area of South Church Street and is a lesser commercial zone used to transition from the adjacent residential property to heavier commercial zoning in the area. There are protections for adjacent residential zones are built into the PCD program book. Uh, the second reason is the PCD is intended for a limited list of neighborhood commercial uses and expressly prohibits uses that have been requested by the neighbors to include vape and cigarette shop, pain clinic, and alcohol and drug addiction rehabilitation centers. And thirdly, the PCD is consistent with the future land use map for the suburban neighborhood commercial land use designation. And with that, staff is asking that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, after which formulate a recommendation to the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, Matt Taylor's here. He'll provide a brief presentation, um, and available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Uh, Chairman Halliburton, members of the planning commission, and Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm also accompanied by Mr. Stephen Dotson, one of the applicants on the project tonight, and do have a brief presentation over what we have termed South Corner, sorry, South Church Corner, um, planned commercial development. As Ms. Rush said, it's a little bit over half an acre site located at the southwest corner of the intersection of South Church Street or two thirty-one and Highfield Drive. Um, today, the site mainly drains toward the northeast into that, toward that intersection, and then it continues northward in a roadside ditch along South Church Street. Uh, water is provided by CUD. It's, uh, located within two thirty-one as well as Highfield Drive. And its sanitary sewer is located to the south. We will have to extend that up within the right-of-way of T-Dot with this particular project. The upper left-hand picture is a picture of the existing house on our property that will, will be removed at the beginning of our property in its, in, beginning of our project, uh, in its entirety. Uh, the upper right-hand corner is picture immediately, uh, to the south. Uh, this is the, um, one Ms. Rush described as an existing home but operating a business out of. And then on the bottom is the recently constructed Aldi, uh, that is on the east side of South Church Street, and its access on the South Church is directly aligns with Highfield Drive. Our plan, uh, does not have any access onto two thirty-one. Uh, we have one access on the Highfield Drive located on the western portion of our property. Uh, we have planned for a single building, uh, one-story in height, uh, at about approximately forty-two hundred square feet in size. Um, we have planned for parking to be distributed amongst the front and back. Uh, we've also planned for two connections to the south, so when that property and others are redeveloped, there, it are, uh, connection opportunities, uh, with that. Uh, of course, all of our lighting here will meet sea, full city requirements, uh, so no lights spill over on the neighbors. Uh, we have planned for buffers along the west side, uh, that would include a fence as well. Uh, we've got over twenty percent open space, and of course, we've got our formal open space planned along Highfield Drive. We've also have our proposed sign at, near the intersection of Highfield and two thirty-one. The building design itself, uh, again, relied heavily on the design, design guidelines. Um, we have built this building or currently building this building on a project on Highway ninety-six. Um, it's got very nice offsets, good quality materials, variation in roof line. We call attention to the entrances through accent lighting as well as glass and the metal awnings. Um, so, uh, those same materials will continue around the back. Uh, this particular view is basically from the intersection of Highfield and two thirty-one. Landscape design, as I mentioned, there's a type D buffer, which again is our, uh, second-most, uh, extremious buffer, uh, within the zoning ordinance. We've also accompanied that with the fence. Um, our plan, um, that buffer's in the red at this location. Our formal open space is in the yellow, so we have some nice seating areas, plaza areas, uh, some pedestrian scale lighting. Uh, we've, uh, planted abundance of foundation plantings along, uh, each of the sides of the building, and then, uh, we'll, we've got plantings along the right-of-ways to screen our parking, and then we've got a lot of plantings as well as an enclosure around our trash, um, to screen that from public view as well. The, this, again, just a sample of the palette. Uh, so again, the lower right-hand corner would be heavily used inside the buffer area. The upper, uh, pictures will be in used in our landscape islands and perimeter plantings, and then the lower left-hand would be, uh, accent in the formal areas and to try to, uh, and be utilized underneath any overhead power that might be along the perimeter of the property. Site again is a very neighborhood service-oriented, um, uh, development. Uh, the uses have been paired, um, way down, uh, that full list is inside your booklet. The primary driver of this project is the urgent care. Uh, my client has three urgent cares currently operating in, um, Murfreesboro. One of those is on Memorial Boulevard. One of those is on Highway ninety-nine. One of those is on Medical Center and has a fourth one currently under construction near the intersection of Highway ninety-six and Veterans would like to open the same, uh, sort of use at this particular location as well. That would leave us with one tenant space, and so we will monitor that tenant space very closely. Uh, just because the site's relatively small, we've got a limited number of parking spaces. Uh, we don't want to hinder ourselves. We will own the building and operate the business, um, with the same applicants. So we'll, what, we'll monitor that very closely as we always do. Again, no access onto two thirty-one with this project, and then we have our main access on Highfield shown here in blue. And then we've shown for two stubs to the south in yellow, uh, for that future connection once that property redevelops. As Ms. Rush said, we have asked for two exceptions. They both have to do with the southern property line. Um, and really, we requested these because, one, the property is being used for commercial purposes today. We also believe that commercial redevelopment to be even more intensive will occur in the near future on the properties to the south, and so, um, did not want to treat that or encumber this property, uh, overly so. So we have requested an exception to the. So we have requested an exception to the type D buffer along the southern property line. And then we've requested a five-foot exception to the building setback along that southern property line as well. And as Ms. Rush said, we did host a neighborhood meeting. I think we had approximately 10 people attend. We did specifically exclude some uses coming out of that meeting. Otherwise, I think the program has largely been the same. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? I've got one, not necessarily for you, Mr. Taylor, but maybe for staff. So we are emphasizing this cross-connectivity. Got two options once this other lot is developed. Are we thinking that we're going to obligate, and this may not be the appropriate question at this time, but obligate the person who develops this other lot to be, to connect to each of these? Or have an option to one? Because if we choose, if we ask them to connect to each of these, it's going to kind of pigeonhole that developer as to what building they can put on that lot.
I think, I think what, what we're, what he is committing to is, at our request, leaving the option open for one or both. More than likely, just one, I would think, to be connected to the south.
Okay.
And, and I think there are several reasons for that. Is that, you know, one, the intersection to the south at the next intersection is signalized. And so this would, it would create an ability for these lots, which we suspect in the future will be redeveloped commercially to flow down to that, to that traffic signal, or to move freely from one of these commercial lots to the next without having to get back out onto South Church Street. So we think it's important to set up that future connectivity. But to answer your question, Mr. Halliburton, I think that, that one of those will be extended, probably not both. And that will be evaluated as the, as the plan to the south unfolds.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. We will open the public hearing on this zoning application. Anyone that would like to speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And planning commission, address any comments or questions or motions on this application.
If there are none, I'll move for approval. Subtle staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion to approve. In a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That application has passed. So we'll move on to item D, annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 22.3 acres located along Butler Drive. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush.
Thank you. This item is the annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 22.32 acres located along the west side of Butler Drive, as shown on the map on the screen. It is located north of Joby Jackson Parkway. And the City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant for this item. The property is currently vacant. You can see in the aerial view that there were some structures, but those have since been demolished. Simultaneous with this annexation request is a request to zone the property to industrial, to a heavy industrial zoning district. So the property is located within the city's urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limit line along Butler Drive. It is also located within the proposed future land use map service infill line. The plan of services does demonstrate that the city services can be provided to the site. And also, when future development occurs, it also indicates that city services could provide at that time as well. Staff conducted a neighborhood meeting on January the 9th, so just this week, and was held at Fire Station Number Two and Running Me Drive. We did have some residents attend and ask some questions, and staff was there. And Mr. Darren Gore was there as well to provide more detailed information about this project. And we'll be here this evening as well to answer any questions, if you have any. So staff is recommending approval of this annexation. And our request to the commission tonight is for you to open up a public hearing and, and make a recommendation for the city council following that. I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as other staff members here in the audience. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Rush? All right. We will move on with the opening of the public hearing associated with the annexation of this property into the city. All those that would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward. This is an active group tonight. All right, with that, we'll close our public hearing. Any questions, comments, or motions associated with this application by the planning commission?
Nope.
There are no questions. Move for approval. Subtle staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's a tied second.
I was first.
All those in, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That application passes. Next item on the agenda is a companion zoning application for approximately 22.3 acres along Butler Drive to be zoned H1 or HI. Simultaneous with annexation, City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush.
Thank you. This property, again, is 22.32 acres located along the west side of Butler Drive and north of Joby Jackson. As indicated, the City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. We're proposing to zone this property to heavy industrial. The purpose of the zoning is to allow for the future development of city facilities. And these potentially could include material management, processing facility, as well as assault brine storage, outdoor vehicle and equipment storage, and employee building with offices contained therein. As indicated in the last item, a neighborhood informational meeting was held on January the 9th, 2023, at Fire Station Number Two, and we did have some residents that did attend. The adjacent zoning in this area is important to note that it is primarily industrial. So to the north, there are heavy industrial uses as well as zoning. Properties to the west and south, and south of Joby Jackson are zoned general industrial. Those rezonings took place just a few years ago. I think it might have been before COVID. I don't remember, but those are fairly recent rezonings. So this is in the midst of other industrial areas. The future land use map that show, does recommend that general commercial is the proposed appropriate land use that's on our current map. This area, again, is primarily industrial, so that was not really an appropriate land use. And as we're going through our study of the proposed future land use map, staff is recommending that this area be public institutional. And a portion of it also is in the business innovation area. So public institutional, any city facilities would be consistent with that type of land use. And business innovation is for new types of manufacturing, factories, R&amp;D types of uses. So depending on what would go there, it's, it's very probable that would also be very consistent. Staff's recommendation is to support the rezoning for the following reasons. That the HI zoning district would be consistent with the proposed future land use map, because it is compatible with adjacent industrial zoning districts and the surrounding land uses in the area. The HI zoning allows for a variety of industrial uses, including municipal uses that are also industrial in nature, such as a materials management and processing facility, the salt brine storage, outdoor vehicle storage and equipment storage, as well as employee buildings. The development of the property with heavier industrial municipal uses would provide a public benefit to the community for this area. And HI zoning would be consistent with the existing zoning at this interchange, including properties to the north that are currently zoned HI, and to the south of Joby Jackson Parkway that are zoned general industrial. Ready access to major arterial roadways and highway for the proposed municipal industrial uses and realignment of the future Butler Drive realignment project. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing and then discuss the matter, after which it will need to formulate a recommendation for the city council. Leave, Mr. Gore has a couple of slides or information to share with you.
I'm really glad I was thinking I was going to miss out on Darren Gore PowerPoint.
I just thought that you would be, we can, we can forego it if you would rather not, not say. You've probably seen this, seen this before.
Yes.
Just a real quick description of what we, what we expect to, this will come up, what we expect to go there. So we're looking at a four-part project, a material management station. There's a manufacturing component, and then we're creating some renewable natural gas. There's a large federal subsidization right now, not only in RINs, I don't know if you know what RINs, Renewable Identification Number Systems, that the federal government pays a premium for renewable natural gas. There's also a, through the Inflation Reduction Act, 25% of this project may, may get a rebate from the IRS. So the site looks something like this, where we have a materials management station and a, the SE3 manufacturing in the green. And the future public works facility, you can kind of see in this location. Oops. Sorry. Well. My PowerPoint, his skills have failed me. The area here is the, a realignment of Butler Drive, so that we can get some separation down on Joby Jackson. Believe the, the intent is to create a little cul-de-sac on Butler Drive here, the old Butler Drive. So we will be coming in and out, ingress egress here to begin with. But if the, when the new road is built, this will actually be the, the tail end of the property. So this is what we're looking at. It's going to be an industrial-type building, pre-manufactured metal building. And there will be no odors or noise. All material will be handled indoors, quickly processed. And we also have an anaerobic digestion component where we're going to be generating renewable natural gas. There's actually a anaerobic reactor at the Pillsbury and Yoplait Plant right across the river from Indian Hills. Right now, they're doing the same thing, creating renewable natural gas and using that to co-gen power for their facility there at General Mills. So this is something, we won't be co-genning electrical power with the gas. We're going to be selling it or piping it into a natural gas pipeline down the road. So that's, that's kind of the quick, quick version of what we're looking at doing. Very innovative project and something that we think will be a huge benefit to the citizens of Murfreesboro.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Gore while he's around the podium? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We will, any questions before we move into the public hearing? All right. We'll move on to a public hearing regarding the zoning application. Anyone that would like to speak for or against this, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Amy Akla, and I live at 3010 Wentworth Court, inside of Savannah Ridge. So my concerns are for the transfer station, that there's going to be an odor. Savannah Ridge is a very nice area. So our pool is right at the beginning of 398 Sar Lane. So I'm just wanting to make sure that if there is an odor, what's going to happen? How are we going to fix that? Because I still want our residents to enjoy our pool without smelling garbage. So that's my concerns, is the odor for Savannah Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Lynn Buchanan. I live at 3342 Mosey Lane in Savannah Ridge. This just came to our attention in the neighborhood yesterday, and obviously, I know that it's been going on with the city council for quite some time. It looks as though it is approved and kind of a done deal, but we, we are very concerned in Savannah Ridge. I've been a member, a resident of Savannah Ridge for 13 years, and I live on the backside of the neighborhood, not near the railroad tracks, but definitely more towards the railroad tracks than 231. So we're, we're, we just have great concerns about this. It's, it's surprising that it's coming in so close to us. It's also surprising, based on a comment that I heard a moment ago, about that this, this is an appropriate use for a heavy industrial, something to the effect of it's not for general commercial. I don't understand how it can't be general commercial when Buc-E's is going in directly across the street from this. So it's, it's just alarming, to say the least. I'm concerned, as Amy is, with the odor. I know it says that there's no odor. I don't understand the process. I'm in the process of understanding it better with Waste Away. However, when there's that much trash going into a facility, the fact that there's no odor is mind-boggling. Also, I know I have to be quick. The, one of the other concerns is the traffic pattern that the trucks will be using in and out of that facility. I see where Butler is going to be retooled, but my concern is, is when you're going from Joe, down Joby from the interstate right now to 231, it is, the traffic on that road has picked up tremendously. So I would be concerned that the trash trucks and larger vehicles that will be transporting any trash down that road would be there. Because when you're trying to get out onto Joby from the backway from our neighborhood right now to avoid 231, it is at certain times of the day almost impossible to get onto Joby, turning left towards the interstate. So I would want to, to find out more about what the traffic patterns for the trucks are going to be coming and going from this facility. There's an offset right there at Parsons and County Farm that it's just, it's a nightmare right now. So it's very concerning what it's going to come to. Also, I've, I've found out that there was a neighborhood meeting on, on the 9th, and I would like to request if someone could help me understand how we can find out about meetings that are in our area, so that we can be aware of those meetings in order to attend them. More for information gathering than anything. We're very concerned about this. We love our neighborhood. We take pride in our neighborhood. Our HOA is very active. And I'm sure that we'll have more people attending these meetings in the future. But we're just concerned as residents, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Anybody else like to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. So I'll go through some of the questions that I heard. Mr. Gore, you may need to answer some of these, and then staff may need to answer some of these. I know you mentioned on a couple occasions in your presentation that, that this was not going to generate any odor. You used Pillsbury as an example of how the, at least the gas piece would work. Is the, when the trash comes into this facility, does the trash get emptied out into a building that's enclosed? Or is it just sitting on the grounds and then a forklift? You see what I'm trying to get at here?
Sure. The, the, the trash or the garbage is brought indoors, and it's put onto a tipping floor, which we're calling Materials Management Station. So the material management is basically the mouth, where you have to unload the garbage that's collected in the city. Traffic pattern, again, I don't know if this is going to be easy to follow, but I should have probably had a bigger, I know we've got a bigger exhibit that shows the new Butler Drive realignment. But we're going to, that's going to be a signalized intersection where the new Butler comes in on Joby, which is going to be, let's just mark it here on the south. If they can put that up, that's going to be obviously farther south. There's going to be 30 to 40 trucks. I mean, this, this facility is only going to be sized for 400 tons of garbage per day. That is less than half of what Rutherford County generates. So we are not going to, I know one of the main concerns of city council was, we don't want to import trash. We don't want to make this thing a behemoth or something that's going to be a regional outlet for people's trash. So it's only going to be sized primarily for the city, the county convenience centers, the school systems, and maybe Smyrna and Laverne are going to be able to fit in it. That's it. All the commercial and industrial trash that the county generates is still going to have to find alternative outlets when Middle Point closes. alternative outlets when Middle Point closes. The nexus behind creating this site is the anticipation of Middle Point landfill closing, when the city is going to lose its ability to tip or to dump trash at Middle Point free of charge. So, this process is intended to be an innovative process where, again, we get significant federal subsidization for generating gas using the trash as a feedstock. I know it's a lot of information, but we're talking about 30 to 40 trucks per day would come in. And so, you're going to, you're going to come in, and again, I'm going to kind of, you're going to have to use your imagination a little bit. You're coming in off of the new signalization here. It's going to have to wrap around the site, and then it's going to come back into the old Butler Drive and be, you know, come in and then come out, and then again, have to kind of go back the way that they came in. So, that's kind of the traffic pattern and the traffic volume we're talking about. And primarily, it's going to be, you know, kind of our side loader trucks, the garbage trucks that you see picking up garbage across the city. The, so the trash is indoors, and the only thing I can kind of use synonymous to this situation is we have a biosolids building at our water resource recovery facility right next to Oakley Subdivision and right next to Riverbend Subdivision. Basically, all of the solids that come through the sewer system are collected in a pre-manufactured metal building, and we de-water those solids, and then we haul those de-watered solids over to Middle Point Landfill. It's enclosed. If you're in the building, you can smell it. I mean, you know, you can have, it has an odor. But, we have no odor complaints from Oakley Subdivision or Riverbend or any of the surrounding neighborhoods. I can almost guarantee you that that odor generated at our biosolids building at our worth is a lot more pungent than the trash that, odor that will be generated here. So, and there are ways to mitigate it, too. There can be negative pressure systems. We can create a situation where, you know, we're pulling air in. Obviously, that air has to be exhausted. But, I did, I don't know who I talked to. I talked to two residents from Savannah Ridge today, this afternoon about this concern. I live in Indian Hills. It's about a six tenths of a mile, a little over half a mile from where we're proposing this facility to kind of those back-end homes on Savannah Ridge. Actually, you've got a closer facility across the interstate. It's the villages of Elam Farms, I think Apartments. And we do, we are going to be kind of neighbors to the south with Buc-E's. So, we're going to have significant, if there are any odors generated or if there is any situation where we have complaints of odor, it's probably going to come from Buc-E's or from the apartments across the interstate. And we will do whatever we have to do to manage those. I've dealt with odor. I deal with all the odor complaints from Middle Point Landfill on the north side of town. We have techniques to mitigate odor if it becomes a problem. The material that's dumped or tipped at this material management station, it immediately goes into the Waste Away process. The Waste Away process takes about 30 minutes. It basically takes the trash, it removes all the metals, plastics, things of value that we can recycle. Then it runs the rest of the trash through what's called a hydrolizer, which is basically a continuous flow autoclave. They use a steam explosion technique to basically take all the, you know, make the material inert or create a wood or coal substitute. It has no smell when it comes through that process. It's a very quick process to create this. And so, that's the feedstock that goes into the reactor to create the gas. No gas escapes the process. So, again, if there are any odors that do arise, that do come about involving this development, we will react, because again, it's a city project and we're not going to want to be bad neighbors. That's why we, we do that at our water resource recovery facility. We are good neighbors with the surrounding subdivisions, and we will take that same position here.
So, I have a question while you're standing there. Kind of the hours of operation? I mean, are these trucks coming in at 6:00 in the morning and operating?
It's going to be, it's going to be two shifts, yes. It will be, it will be working through the day shift and then the second shift. Third shift will be just maintenance of the facility. This is going to be some very, I mean, there's, there's, it's a manufacturing. It requires air knives. There are grinders. There are different sorters and things to sort the trash out. And again, that equipment won't be running through the night, but there will be preventive maintenance activities going on during that, during the evening.
Truck traffic would be limited to what times?
Well, the truck traffic is probably going to, our truck traffic is going to be limited to just the normal operation hours. Russell, is it 6:00 in the morning until?
Yeah, so our operation hours are 6:00 to 2:30?
Go ahead, come on, Russell. Russell's our solid waste director.
Yes, so, operation hours are 6:00 AM to 2:30 PM. Our trucks at a transfer facility will dump out every evening before they park, so they're not going to be dumping at 6:00 AM. They're going to start immediately collecting trash. Takes about four hours to get a load on. So, you're going to look at a first load maybe before 11:00. Second load, we're right around the 2, 2:30 mark. And we run 14 of those every day.
Okay, that was, my question was, the frequency of the trucks coming through is roughly what? Every 10 minutes, every 15 minutes, every hour?
I think it probably depends. When I say 30 to 40 trucks per day, it may, I'm assuming if it's a 400-ton per day facility and you have a 10-ton loaded vehicle, that's, 40 trucks is that, there may be some partial loads. That traffic may go up a little bit. So, there may be some peaks where they are all, there's going to be some trucks that are all trying to dump at the same time, but it takes, it's a 10 to, 10 to, 10 to minute dump, and then they're back out on the road. And that's the other thing. If you go back to the, to the site, with this, with the old Elam Road kind of being the dead-ended, right? This intersection where Butler Road currently comes into Joe B. Jackson, that's going to be, that's going to be killed, right? That's going to be, so you actually have the ability, and we have pretty big stacking length here, and then you can actually use a little bit of Butler Road. So, I would not expect there to be five, four or five at any one time, maybe stacking out at the location.
But, these would just be normal trash trucks. So, it wouldn't be like, I mean, it would just be like a trash truck driving by in the morning.
There could be, I mean, now, if the county, when the county, they've got roll-offs that they use at their convenience center. So, if Rutherford County comes in and utilizes the facility, and we come up maybe with an interlocal agreement where the county convenience centers and the schools can come in, they will be bringing their trucks in on the road. They'll drop the roll-offs off, and we'll have to accommodate them as well. But, I think the main point is, is that this thing is going to be 400 tons per day. That's max. We can't accept any more, the way the Waste Away facility is sized, they can't process any more trash than that. So, this is not going to turn out to be something like Middle Point where you have, you know, where you see the trucks stacked from the top of the hill all the way back down to, to, is that Compton? Or Jefferson Pike? Yeah. It's not going to be anything like, we're not using, we're not trying to make this necessarily a profit center. We're trying to really get the federal subsidies that are afforded us and right-size this facility so that it just services the city and the county and keeps our solid waste rates as low as possible.
I was thinking of it in terms of noise, but it looks like you're still going to be 1,600 feet from the train tracks, and the train's going to generate way more noise coming through than these trucks would ever do. So, I feel comfortable.
Right. I think when I did, I was, about 3,200 feet is what I came up with. It was six tenths of a mile, and you're right. I mean, I live at Indian Hills, so I mean, I hear the train come through pretty frequently. That's a...
So, there was a couple of other questions that you may not know the answer to, so this may be towards the staff. Ms. Buchanan asked about adjacent zoning. Ms. Rush, I know you kind of touched on that as part of your presentation. I know that the property that was to the north, and I'd have to see a map to figure out what direction that was, general commer, well, if you could just help us with the adjacent zoning that's to this property.
Well, adjacent zoning is primarily industrial. So, it's heavy industrial to the north. The parts that are unincorporated are zoned, light industrial in the county. Heavy industrial is also further to the north and general industrial to the south. Commercial uses can go into industrial zoning districts. So, that is common. You'll see fast food, Buc-E's is able to develop in a general industrial zoning district. So, it is a compatible use. So, you can always go downward. What you can't do is you can't go upward with zoning. So, you cannot put industrial into a commercial zoning district or residential zoning district, obviously.
And then, Ms. Buchanan also asked about how was the neighborhood meeting, I'll call it advertised, but how was it publicized? How was it, how would the people, how would people in Savannah Ridge know that that was going on?
Yeah, I can, I can take that with Mr. Halliburton. So, our ordinance for public hearings requires notification by mail to property owners within 250 feet of the subject property. For neighborhood meetings, we usually go 500 feet to cast a wider net. In this case, because it was so sparsely populated around, directly adjacent to the subject property, we went 1,000-foot radius around the subject property. And so, 1,000 feet, I think, didn't even get us to the railroad tracks. So, we, I think primarily the people who were notified for this particular neighborhood meeting were the folks on the west side of the railroad tracks. But, we do our notifications for neighborhood meetings by direct mail to nearby property owners.
So, this application will also go to council. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Ms. Buchanan, I think you probably heard his response, but I will also mention that if this is approved, this will go on to city council, and a public hearing will be at city council also. Do we have an anticipated date if this does pass tonight, when it would be at the, on the agenda for the council?
Mr. Halliburton, we would know that after next Thursday.
Okay.
We anticipate taking that to city council next Thursday for the scheduling of the public hearing. So, if interested parties would like to call our office next Friday, the 20th, we would know by then when the public hearing will be scheduled at city council.
Thank you, Matthew.
Sure.
Those were the questions that I heard. Anybody else would like to address any other questions or comments to Ms. Rush or Mr. Gore from the planning commission?
I've got a question for Ms. Agarwater. You've been to Waste Away, and they're talking about smell. What is your take on smell in and out of the building?
And so, and if I can confirm with Mr. Gore, this, the, this is a similar process as to the back part of the building that I saw when I visited the Waste Away facility, correct?
Correct.
Where the trash is backed in.
Right.
Dumped ultimately. So, the trash doesn't stay there very long. It's there for mere moments.
Right.
And then that door closes right when the truck leaves.
Right. There's a pre-shredding, as soon as it's dumped, they take the garbage and put it into a pre-shredder. So, it, when you drive up to the Waste, there's a Waste Away facility in Morrison that you can go visit. Depends on if they're actively taking garbage, though, right? I mean, that's one thing. But, you really can't smell it. It really has no odor.
You can't. And when you drive up to the facility, there's no smell. I stood outside for probably 15 minutes talking on the phone, and in fact, I didn't even realize, I thought we would walk into this corporate office and they would shuttle us over to the facility. I was really shocked when I walked in, and then we walked through a double door and the facility was right there. I didn't smell anything outside, and even, I mean, I walked through the facility and none of us were holding our noses or wearing masks. I mean, the trash is there for such a short, limited amount of time. It's not like the landfill where it sits and festers and the elements, and it gets worse and worse, you know? So, I'm a big fan of Waste Away, and I've supported it from the beginning, and I'm very grateful for everything Mr. Gore does.
Well, and I'll say this, odor, odor, there's always intermittent and sporadic events, right? And those can occur. I mean, I'm not going to ever say that, hey, there's not going to be a situation where if the equipment breaks down and we have to store a significant amount of garbage indoors, that some of that in a certain atmospheric condition, if it doesn't eke out. But, I can tell you that there will not be a chronic odor problem, because that will be handled. There will, the only time there could be any odor is if it's going to be an extreme situation that is just highly unlikely. Again, never say never, but we have gone years and years and years at our water resource recovery facility with our biosolids handling process, and we have no, we have no complaints. And it is, it is just the same kind of facility. It's a pre-manufactured metal building, and every solid that goes through the sewer is deposited there. Just saying. It's a, it's a, it's not a place you want to go have lunch. I'll just say that. So, we've had experience in this regard from the water and the wastewater side. I think we're going to be, we're going to be good neighbors, and we're not going to have a problem on the solid waste side.
And this wasn't brought up, but this came to my mind. You know, I heard you say city trash, county convenience centers, schools, but what I didn't hear you say is private haulers in the county. So, that is not something that's anticipated with this. Is that a correct?
Well, big round numbers, the county, let's just say, county, everybody, private hauler, commercial businesses, industrial, the cities, municipality schools. It generates just over 300,000 tons annually. The city generates about 50,000, and that's what we pick up for our residents. The county generates around 50,000, and that's from the convenience centers and the county schools. So, this is sized for 140,000 tons per year. The city and the county generate about 100,000. So, ideally, we will get, we will, we will try to optimize the facility and get that other 40,000 tons from somewhere else. That may be commercial, but it's going to be stuff that's inside Rutherford County. It's not going to be exporting it in from, from out of the county, if that math made sense.
It does. I guess my comment would be, I'm all for maximizing especially the capital that's going into this project. But, at the same time, as being on the planning commission, we're seeing this city and county grow. And so, 140 might be 200, you know, in 20 years. And so, what happens then?
Well, we've, we've talked about it quite, so, back when there was a solid waste advisory committee, back in 2016, I think, the county and the city tried to come up with a solution for the trash. The original, or the final recommendation was to create a transfer station on the south side and a transfer station on the north side. So, the county is actually still looking at designing a potential facility at their county landfill up off of Jefferson Pike at the landfill. So, if we, if this turns out, if this is a success from the standpoint of being kind of the lowest-cost, highest-benefit solution, then I can very well see that the county and the city may partner on a northern Waste Away facility as well.
All right. Any other questions for staff or Mr. Gore? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or motions associated with this zoning application?
Are we allowed to ask additional questions?
No, ma'am. Public hearing's closed.
If not, I'll move for approval. Subdue all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the zoning application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and this application passes. Moving on to staff reports and other business. We have a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of drainage and sanitary sewer easements on property located north of Medical Center Parkway and along Robbie Corleau Lane. Chris Mayberry of Reagan Smith, no, yeah. Is Chris Mayberry here?
I don't see Mr. Mayberry.
Okay. Representing Heinz, Curry Park Land Holdings is the applicant. Ms. Kerr is presenter. Was it me?
I think so.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton and members of the planning commission. In this mandatory referral, the planning commission is being asked to consider abandoning a sanitary sewer easement and a drainage, drainage easement located on property north of Medical Center Parkway on the Clary Park development. The applicant seeks to abandon easements to subdivide this property into multiple lots for commercial businesses. A final plat has also been submitted for the Clary Park subdivision section two in conjunction with these proposed abandonment requests for review and approval from the staff and planning commission. A copy of the proposed plats for Clary Park is attached in your agenda materials. The Murfreesboro Water Resources Board met on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two and voted to recommend abandonment of the easement. City engineer Michelle Emerson has reviewed, reviewed the proposed drainage easement abandonment and does not object to it provided that the appropriate conditions are placed on its approval. Both the water and sewer drainage, and drainage easements will be relocated and recorded with the new final plat. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council subject to the following conditions. The drainage easement abandonment should be subject to final approval of the legal documents by city attorney. If approved by city council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary for the legal department to prepare the legal documents for these easement abandonments included but not limited to any exhibits and legal descriptions needed. The applicant will be responsible for recording a legal document, including payment of the recording fees. The drainage easement abandonment is subject to the submission and recording of a subdivision plat that relocates the easement as proposed by the applicant. The drainage easement abandonment and final plat recording the new easement should be done simultaneously, and any plans for any required improvements need to be approved by the Development Services Division prior to the issuance of any required permits. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have about these easement abandonments.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Any questions for Ms. Kerr? If not.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That application is approved. The next item on our.
Excuse me, Mr. Halliburton, can y'all confirm that that is subject to staff comments?
Oh, even on right-of-way abandonments? I'm sorry. My motion is subject to all staff comments. Can I get a second?
Second.
Cool.
We need to re-vote?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor, motion in a second, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a sanitary sewer and water line easement at St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital on Medical Center Parkway. Rob Winston of Gresham Smith, on behalf of St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital is the applicant, and Ms. Kerr is.
Thank you again. In this mandatory referral, the planning commission is being asked to consider abandoning sanitary sewer and water line easements located at seventeen hundred Medical Center Parkway. These easements were recorded by plat on May ninth, twenty twelve. The applicant seeks to abandon these easements at, on the St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital property for the development of a critical care unit additions and where the easements are in conflict with the proposed additions. A new water line easement will be dedicated with the water relocation project at a location approved by the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department staff. The sanitary sewer will not be relocated, and the portion within the abandoned area will become private for the hospital to maintain. The Murfreesboro Water Resources Board met on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two and voted to recommend approval of the request. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council subject to the following conditions. The waters, the, the new water line easement shall be dedicated before or simultaneous with the abandonment of existing water line easement. The applicant must provide the legal department with all the necessary documentation, including any legal descriptions and exhibits required to prepare the, and record the legal instrument. The applicant will be responsible for recording the legal instrument, including any recording fee, fees, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Kerr? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Subject to all staff comments.
So moved, subject to all staff comments.
We have a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Y'all, y'all got our back. We appreciate that.
Supposed to learn from my mistakes, Jase.
So they got you last?
Yeah, they did. Can you believe that?
He didn't fall asleep tonight.
No, I think I was listening to a podcast in the back over there.
All right, before this gets out of hand, the last item on our agenda is mandatory referral to consider the dedication of an electric easement located on a Cineo-owned property west of Beezy Road. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you, Mr. Halliburton and members of the planning commission. In this mandatory referral, the planning commission is being asked to consider approving the dedication of electric easement for Middle Tennessee Electric on property owned by the city west of Beezy Road. The property is currently used as part of the Stones River Gateway Trail, and per the twenty forty major transportation plan, there is the proposed River Rock Connector Bridge that is planned to extend over the subject property. They'll, of course, provide connection from River Rock Boulevard to go to the east connecting to New Salem. So that is why this, the purpose for this is to dedicate those easements for MTE, their power lines, their street lines, for this associated road connector project, just to provide for that electric infrastructure. Public Works has confirmed that MTE will stop at the power lines at Beezy Road, at the Beezy Road intersection with the current phase of the connector project, and will extend them to the east, again, towards New Salem, over the interstate at a later date when the next phase of the connector project begins. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Aguilera?
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's the last item. Do we have any other staff reports or business to consider?
Just, just a reminder that kind of the odd scheduling of this month, we have our, normally we have two weeks of separation between our meetings, between the first and second meeting of the month, but our second meeting of the month will actually be next Wednesday at one PM, and we'll be getting the agenda out to y'all on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. With that, we adjourn.